For joining us today for the NOAA evaluation public meeting for the Rhode Island Coastal Management Program. Please sign in if you would like to receive a copy of the evaluation report findings at the end, or if you'd like to to provide a public comment today. Just a few bits of formality before we go into the public comments. My name is Michael Migliore. I am the program manager for evaluation and environmental compliance at the NOAA Office for Coastal Management, and I'm a lead evaluator for this visit. I'm based in Silver Spring, Maryland, and I'll have the rest of the evaluation team introduce themselves.
I'm Erin Wilson. I'm from Maine's Coastal Zone Management Program.
Hi, I'm Betsy Nicholson. I'm the North Regional Director for the Office for Coastal Management, based just north of Boston.
Allison Castlaw, also with the Office for Coastal Management. I'm the liaison to Rhode Island's Coastal Management Program.
And we have Jeff Wells here, the program manager that probably familiar with. But here, just in case there are any questions or we need to follow up with anything. But the comments are directed towards the NOAA team. The reason we are holding this public meeting is that NOAA through the Coastal Zone Management Act provides federal funding annually to support the Rhode Island Coastal Management Program. The Coastal Zone Management Act also calls for NOAA to do periodic evaluations of the coastal management programs and to hold a public meeting as part of the process. This evaluation covers the time period from the previous evaluation through today. So that's July 2019 through October 2024. The end result of the evaluation will be a set of written findings that highlight the program's accomplishments and provide recommendations. The evaluation team is interested in hearing from you and your thoughts about the program. The evaluation has three focus areas: program administration, public access, and offshore wind and climate resilience. We accept comments on any part of the implementation of the coastal management program. This is not an informational meeting. The NOAA team is here to receive information from you, the public. Please also note that we receive, we accept written comments, and you can email those to me by the end of next week. Friday, October 25th, my contact information is on the flyer at the door. And so we are going to we're going to start the public comment, and we'll use the sign-in sheet in the order that we received. And we are, in order to make sure we have enough time for everyone to speak, we're going to have four minutes for each public comment. And so we will start, I'm assuming that they go up to the microphone there?
Yes.
So our first person who signed up is William Hutchinson.
Okay, okay. My name is Norlem Hutchinson. I'm from Jamestown, Rhode Island, and I'm here to comment on how the program or CRMC works, or in this case, doesn't work. I'm part of a group of folks who were concerned about the proposal for the expansion of a boatyard with some dredging and some dock expansion in Jamestown. And we were concerned about the why and the need for this and organized a substantial response to the application from CRMC or through CRMC of the folks who were promoting this expansion. And didn't go well for our side anyway. And that, and I really, as a consumer of, because I'm not used to these proceedings and things like that. But we really did organize an amazing pushback to this proposed thing and had, I don't know, 20 some odd speakers and professionals involved and things like that. And CRMC went ahead and approved this project lickety-split. And dredging happened before we even had a scheduled review of this project. And I was just, as a citizen, I was just kind of like, wow, wow. And I've come to learn that they did not follow their own guidelines, Red Book guidelines for how to proceed through these things. There was dredging equipment in place within days after their final approval. So you know that dredging equipment had been scheduled well before that time. It was crazy. And so I'm really concerned about how CRMC operates. And I've come to learn that it's not the only time that there have been issues with them following their own Red Book evaluations. I know CRMC's, you know, historically has been a great organization and really, really cutting edge back in the day. But it's in need of reform as far as my opinion goes. And they, as a other consumer of CRMC, because I have a seaside home, my family has a seaside home. It's been eroding. Our retaining walls washed away a couple of times through hurricanes. I can put core logs in, but the procedure for actually getting a rebuild there is justifiably challenging to get engineered and approved. And CRMC is very good about providing guidelines that one must follow. And I just want them to follow their own guidelines on the other side of it. So again, I'm raising my hand and saying, geez, these guys need a stiff review of processes. And I know that there's actually a movement afoot to reform the agency on the state level and making it more accountable. And I just hope that there's enough push to make that happen.
Thank you. Next one is Rich Langstrom.
Langs. Hello. My name is Richard Langs, Budong Farm in Warwick. And number one, the CRMC does a great job in my neighborhood. I got to tell you, there's a lot of challenges, and they do okay when it comes to coastal management of our shoreline in my neighborhood. So that's, that's the good news. Of course, it's not all good news, Jeff. The problem I'm having is with the Narragansett Bay Estuary Program, which is the other side of what you're funding. And that goes to the DEM. And DEM through Smart Rhode Island is not doing very much with their money. And that raises red flags for me because, as you know, there is some discussion about moving this whole program to DEM. But when you look at what DEM is doing with the Narragansett Estuary Program, it's pathetic. So that's an official comment. The open meeting, Jeff and I have been going back and forth about the open meetings. As you know, when you come in here, if you came through the east door, you have to, it's locked and you can't even get in. And then normally what happens is you have to give your name. You have to present your photo ID. That's, that's an open meetings problem. And Jeff and I have been talking about this for a while. Maybe it's a funding problem. Maybe CRMC doesn't have enough state money or federal money to have the facility open like it's supposed to be. This is, sometimes you wait 10 minutes to get into the building. And like in the wintertime, you know, you have to wait for the guard to show up. And that's just, that's just bush. And it's got nothing to do with Jeff. It's, it's, it's the state apparently in the program. But we got to fix that. That's just, that's just not good. Now, when it comes to rights of way, my petition has been before the CRMC for many years. And the recent rendition was in 2019. And then another, another group came in front of me, and they're going through a very elaborate court-like procedure with this motion after motion. And it doesn't seem to be an administrative hearing officer to handle those kinds of motions. So I'm finding myself waiting years to get before them. I'm not sure if that's a funding problem or what it is. But, but we need to move the things along a little better. Once, once a month to hear six or seven motions just doesn't work. We need, we need to, we need to do it either more often or through a better administrative process. I think that's important. And related to that is the database for rights of way. When people put petitions and then motions and then responses, that kind of thing, it really needs to go into a judicial database where everybody can see it. Because right now, you have to do a foyer anytime you want anything. And you know, Jeff is overburdened with lawyers. I mean, it's really pretty bad. So, so we need, we need to have some kind of organized judicial process. I think that's really important. I don't know how much more time I have, but all in all, I'm very much in favor of what's going on at CRMC versus what's going on at DEM. I go to DEM. They're nice people, but they're terribly bureaucratic. And in fact, the DEM guy sits on the CRMC, right? And he helps me out. He helps me out. He's very, very helpful. But DEM is a big bureaucratic mess. And if we can save CRMC, I'd be very much in favor of it. And I thank you very much. Thank you.
Next speaker is Stuart Ross.
Good evening. My name is Stuart Ross, and I'm a lifelong Jamestowner. I'm also the Chair of Protect Connecticut Coastline, nonprofit Jamestown-based organization whose mission is to protect and preserve the unique and spectacular coastline of Connecticut Island for current and future generations, and coordinates with the Jamestown Comprehensive Community Plan. Our organization was formed in 2020 to oppose the dredging and dock expansions in the Dublin's Gulf for Jamestown Boatyard due to significant environmental and public safety concerns. That summer, over 600 Jamestown residents signed a petition against the JBY application to CRMC. And in October, 26 concerned Jamestowners testified against the expansion. But the CRMC 10-member council mainly comprised of political appointees with no background in marine science or environmental policy, voted 4 to 2 to allow the expansion to go forward. Then, after a second vote in late December, the council allowed the dredging to proceed immediately and didn't observe the mandated 30-day waiting period to allow for an appeal by the neighboring Dublin's Association, TDA. In a scathing letter to CRMC, Rhode Island Attorney General Peter Niroda blasted their nuance egregious decisions for the damage had been done. And almost four years later, TDA's appeal is still tied up in Superior Court. The council's record since then is strewn with misdeeds, including frequent disregard for its own Red Book and secretive agreements with the very organizations it is supposed to regulate, like allowing Champlin's Marina expansions on Block Island, that already been blocked twice in the last 15 years by CRMC itself. Fortunately, the deal was overturned by the Rhode Island Supreme Court, thanks again to RIG NRODA. This was followed by blatant disregard of a state mandated requirement, a prior legislative approval for the installation of an underwater cable under Narragansett Bay. And this was also overturned when discovered. Now the council is poised to reverse the unanimous opinion of their own staff to allow a golf course in North Kingston and permit the illegal construction by the club of a 600-foot breakwater in a protected stretch of the bay. So the many failings of CRMC to obey its only, its very mission, quote, "to preserve, protect, develop", a word that should be preceded by the word responsibly, and restore coastal resources for all Rhode Islanders, have been extremely troubling for all concerned ocean state residents. So often, we've seen the council place special corporate interests ahead of those citizens of Rhode Island. What's more, in the last two state legislative sessions, our state legislators have introduced bipartisan bills in both houses to eliminate the 10-member council, replace it with a citizens' environmental council, and reform the organization with a structure similar to RIDEM. However, due to the secretive transigence of the legislative leadership, these bills were never brought to the floor to afford a vote. There's no question that they would have passed. So we look to you at NOAA to do what we are, what we as RI citizens have not yet been able to do, conduct a comprehensive evaluation of the council's dreadful performance and require major changes to this corrupt and outdated state agency. As already proposed in the legislation, CRMC is currently organized, has truly failed to be responsive to all of us to protect and preserve our beloved coastal resources of Narragansett Bay. We now respectfully ask you at NOAA to right this terrible wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Smith?
Sorry, you can skip me. I just wanted to, because I have time.
Okay. Woody Kemp?
I don't have a prepared document, but my name is Woody Kemp. Lifelong resident of Rhode Island and the Chair of the Warren Harbor Commission. I don't know if you're familiar with harbor commissions, but we're legislated by the state. We're an advisory board to the local councils. And most of our focus over the last many years has been on complying with things like the Harbor Management Plan, which is a requirement of CRMC. And most of our work in the last probably 10, 15 years has been on just professionalizing the mooring field management. And then our project of right-of-way development and then some other projects like Oyster Upwell, our program that we started to try and raise oysters to release to the wild to try and encourage the wild population of oysters to grow. And we work with DEM and a bunch of other agencies. We got to set aside of the bottom so that we could continue with this project. And I think we're one of the few municipalities around that actually has an oyster program to try and release oysters to the wild. One of the challenges that we have with CRMC is it takes an inordinate amount of time to get anything approved or certified. We have, it took us, I'm not, I've lost track of the amount of time. Maybe 10 years to get a Harbor Management Plan approved. We have a huge number of submissions. Town Warren is the smallest town in the smallest state. It's about a mile long, but we have 17 miles of coastline. And we have, part of the Red Book plan is to identify and discover and then develop right-of-ways. We have basically found every right-of-way, actually thought we found every right-of-way, but we found two more just recently that the town owns. And we've done exhaustive research to get these certified and submitted it to CRMC. And it's been stalled due to the legal review. So one of the things that I would like to see at CRMC is more staff so that it can actually do a timely review of the required documents that we have and keep this process moving. Because we've done all the work, we just need the approval. And as far as the enforcement end of it, we have, we have, Warren is a very old town. We have CRMC, we have right-of-way markers that predate CRMC. They're that old. And most of the right-of-ways in the town of Warren go back to colonial times. Most of the documentation goes back into, you know, Old English documents. So that's how far, that's how long they've been there. So we've been pre-CRM C through, through CRMC. We've been through everything. And one of the challenges that we have in addition is the fact that there's constant encroachment on these right-of-ways. So we need a hand as far as enforcing these things. So if anything, I'd like to see CRMC have a larger enforcement ability so that with, once we've identified a right-of-way, we've marked it, we put granite markers in because you need a giant machine to get the granite markers out of the ground. And they still try and take them out of the ground. So the, everything that's in place is fine. We just need more of it to actually work. And we need more people to actually work on it. And this is Rhode Island. We all grew up together. We all went to high school together. So we all know each other. But there appears to be a little bit of conflict when we have a town solicitor who's also the solicitor for the CRMC, who's also a solicitor here. So to try and get an accurate legal review, it seems a little challenging.
Thank you. Chris Powell?
Thank you, guys, for doing this. This is something that's been needed for a long time. My name is Chris Powell. I live in Jamestown. I was a retired marine fisheries biologist from state DEM. So I know the system. I was there for 25 years. Spent a lot of time reviewing CRMC applications and permits. I was actually temporarily assigned to CRMC when I first came to work at Fish and Wildlife to work on permitting because they were totally understaffed overwhelmed by all the development that was going on in the lower bay, especially around the Newport area. So I'm very familiar with the Red Book. I understand the Red Book. I know that it was one of the best coastal programs in the country when it was written. Probably is still one of the best. I'm familiar with CRMC's duties and missions. I spent a lot of time reviewing projects for them, both at DEM, Fish and Wildlife, and when I was at CRMC temporarily. I ran a fisheries project on the bay for 25 years. So I'm very familiar with the entire Narragansett Bay. And one of my, one of the things I did when I was on the bay was always trying to watch coastal development and see what was going on and report it when I could. Probably Jeff and other people would get tired of hearing me. Call them and tell them that it's a dock going up that's not permitted maybe, or bulldozers are on the beach. And so I tried to be kind of the eyes and ears out there when I was on the bay, which I spent 25 years on. But I do know the bay pretty well. Was on the board to save the bay for 14 years. So that was during the time when CRMC was going through some really bad growing pains and when the council was pretty much running the organization. And the council was just peppered with people with special interests. And the decisions were not made necessarily based on the staff decisions. CRMC in general, what I've seen from my 25 years or whatever, has always had a good staff. They've always had a dedicated staff. They've had good biologists. They've had good engineers. They've always tried to do the right thing. But I've sat in many a meeting where the staff would make a recommendation and the council would just totally ignore it. But the council was walking around, or they were having a smoke, or they were talking with somebody. They don't always pay attention to what's going on at the meetings. And it was one of my bones of contention, the number of meetings that I went to. I was chairman of the Conservation Commission Jamestown for 25 years, 27 years. So I dealt with a lot of coastal issues there and got a lot of my feet on the ground there with, with local dock projects and how the rules and regulations were implemented or not implemented. And generally, I could say because of my contact with CRMC, we generally got a really good response from the staff. As long as things didn't go to the council. There were some instances, as the Jamestown Boat Guard instance, that there were a few instances where that did go to the council. We didn't turn out winning the way we should have in some instances. I worked closely with the staff, as I said earlier. I think most of them have their hearts in the right place. They want to do a good job. They're trying to do a good job. They're understaffed at times, depending on the development booms and busts and what's going on in the state of Rhode Island. And if you read the Red Book carefully, they've got a lot of responsibility. And if you look at the water types, and then you look at all the prohibitions and all the, you know, the A assets and the Bs and things, there's a lot for them to do. So I, I think that the staffing issue needs to be carefully looked at in order for them to do the job properly and to do it, you know, the way they would like to do it and turn out the results they would. The legal counsel at CRMC in the past has been mixed. And I'm not sure they've always had their heart in the right place or they had their heart in somebody's right place. Not necessarily the environments of the base. But the legal counsel's been an issue for CRMC. I had worked for DEM for a number of years. I know the in-house legal staff there was good. We had enough council people there that anytime we had an issue, we could come in and talk to them. We always got a really good response. So I think the modeling CRMC more closely, the way DEM is modeled, would probably be very helpful. And I'm sure Jeff would not be adverse to that sort of a thing, you know, falling more into that sort of a guidance. Because in general, I think DEM has done a, done a good job in most of their well and permitting and things like that. And working with CRMC over the years, we've had a pretty close relationship with them. Getting away from politically appointed council members would be terrific. Getting people there who understand things about coastal zone environment, coastal ecology, the bay, and things like that would be very helpful. So anyway.
So can we wrap up?
Yeah.
So we didn't get everybody in?
I just ordered you to really take this whole thing into strong consideration. The issues are obvious. They're not a secret. The issues are obvious. I think it just takes some strong will to change this and to go up against the political powers that like to keep it the way it is sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Robin Squibb.
Um, we're at the store. Mr. Migliore, are you aware of these situations that have been brought up just since I've been seeing you?
Most of them. Some, most of them.
And Betsy, I'm sorry for staring at you, but I just figured out, I've been looking at, Deb Regerio had a commission. There were eight sessions, correct me if I'm wrong. And they were all taped by Capital TV. So I went to look for them, and seven out of the eight are up there. And the one with NOAA that you were there is not up there. So I was surprised at that. And I had had the same situation in the spring. I was able to talk to nice people at Capital TV, and they gave me the link to that particular NOAA hearing. But I think it would be very hard for anyone else to find it. And the reason I was looking for it is I remembered certain comments that I hadn't written, you know, 20 minutes into this, Betsy says this, and they've been removed. So I don't know if that was intentional or a mistake, and it's certainly no way to prove it. But it was very disconcerting to think that would be a little political stuff going on here and removing things that didn't look too good for NOAA. Anyway, that being said, I sat in this very room a couple of years ago because I was contesting a neighbor's dock. This is on the West Passage. Are you aware of Narragansett? Not that it matters.
Yes.
But the West Passage across from Dutch Island in Saunders Town is rough. And I have a dock. It's so, the place my grandparents built in 1932, I get to the chase, Robin. But so we have a seasonal dock, and they're the only docks that last through the storms. Unless you have enough money to keep rebuilding them. Anyway, we had, I had started a movement to contest the dock that was 111 feet long. Mine's 40. It's 78 feet past mean low water, but 111. It goes higher onto the coast. The whole place was given permission, my neighbor's place, that they have an outdoor television. They've been gored in rocks to build up so no one can walk by, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, so we had a hearing right here. It was the worst thing I've ever been through in my life. It was a joke. The council, Jeff, I don't think you were here. Do you go to these?
I do.
Oh, it was Janet's dock?
Yes, I'm familiar with the situation. Yes.
Oh, okay. And the, the dock is one issue, and the lifts were another issue. They had to be approved separately. The staff said they would not make a comment on the, on the lifts. But they, the staff and the council all approved the dock. And then the council approved the lifts. And the council was, Jeff, I don't mean to be rude, but that Jerry Sahakian was on the phone half the time. People, you know, they practically had their feet up on the tables. It was just really disrespectful. And we brought up sort of natural beauty and stuff. And I think it was Jerry who said that the CRMC had nothing to do with that. And then, and too bad there weren't any cameras on these guys. So when my lawyer brought up that fact, that, you know, reading the mission statement of CRMC, I wish there'd been cameras because Jerry just went on. That doesn't get recorded unless you have a camera. Anyway, I was so annoyed that in spite of not a whole lot of money, we took this to Superior Court. And one hands down. We only, we figured out, you know, I've just given up on anything being, being anything but corrupt in the state of Rhode Island. So so have I already gone over it?
Well, you're at time. Just can you wrap up?
We go to the Supreme Court and, and we only challenged the lifts. And, and the judge said, no lifts. And then he said, and as a matter of fact, we're not going to we're not going to allow those guys to build a dock. So now it's in front of Supreme Court. I've been for five years this has gone on. I've been, I've been, I've been harassed. I've been intimidated. I've spent tens of thousands of dollars only because the C R M C did not stick to their rules. So I guess I better stop there. Thank you.
Topher Hamblin.
Thank you. I'm Topher Hamblin, executive director of Save the Bay, and I thank the, the NOAA team for coming here to Rhode Island to review the program. Very quickly, because I know we have time limitations here, we will be submitting a letter, a formal letter by the deadline. Save the Bay, probably more than any other organization, interfaces with C R M C on a daily basis. We review permit applications, enforcement actions, comment on habitat restoration, rights of way, public access generally. So we have a very intimate knowledge and working relationship with the agency. I'd like to tick off several main points here for you today. One is the council itself, the structure. The council, as you know, is an all volunteer body with immense decision-making power and enforcement permitting and other matters. But the council lacks expertise. It lacks accountability. It disempowers the staff. Its decisions are frequently subject to judicial review and remand, and I point to the Champlin's case as exhibit A. It was also inefficient because of issues around quorum and around the politics behind the council. So applications that should be pretty straightforward for the staff end up being dragged out through the politics of council proceedings. And in short, the public does not trust the council to uphold the program and protect Rhode Island's coastal environment. We request NOAA to support the empowerment of the executive director with final administrative decision-making authority on permitting and enforcement. And also, we, we request NOAA to support replacing the council with a stakeholder-driven advisory council on policy. Legal counsel. Currently, the agency contracts a private practice law firm. NOAA has raised an issue in the past to, around legal representation to, and NOAA has urged C R M C to quote, ensure that C R M C staff members have access to legal council hearings. This does not happen. It doesn't happen. Council has legal counsel, but the staff is sitting in a room at a hearing while the, the applicant or the person challenging an enforcement action have an attorney and the council has an attorney, but the staff is ineffective without an attorney. That's not fair. That's not right. So we're requesting NOAA to require that the agency have one or more staff attorneys dedicated fully to the agency's work. Currently, this private practice law firm that the council hires, contracts, has many other clients and many other interests at play. That has to stop. This agency and this, our coast is too important to allow that to continue. And it's also important that the council, that the staff have access to legal counsel during hearings. And on the matter of hearings, under Rhode Island law, and I quote, "All contested cases, all contested administrative cases shall be heard by the administrative hearing officer or by subcommittee if the hearing officer is unavailable to serve." That doesn't happen either. And currently, the council engages in some very unpredictable, inconsistent and arbitrary decisions about which cases go before a hearing officer and which ones do not. That has to change. We'd also recommend that C R M C reengage with the Fisherman's Advisory Board, which resigned en masse in two thousand and twenty three. I will, I will share with you one innocuous incident, it seems, but actually it's very telling. There was a period of time during offshore wind upcoming where a council member made a motion just to have the staff and the Fisherman's Advisory Board just continue discussions on an offshore wind project. That motion was defeated by the council. That speaks volumes as to the problem of the council. And lastly, the staff, as has been said here tonight, the staff is excellent. We hold them in high regard. Don't agree with everything they do, but they are solid professionals in the fields that they're supposed to, to be professionals in. But we need more of them. We have a big coast. We have climate change creating more stress, aquaculture, shoreline access, public access, offshore wind, putting immense demands on the agency. It needs more staff. And again, we will submit this in more detailed and in more detail in writing soon.
Great.
Thank you.
Michael Woods.
Thank you. My name is Michael Woods. I'm here today on behalf of the New England Chapter of Backcountry Hunters and Anglers. We are a membership organization that is focused on protecting access to public lands, waters and wildlife. And as you can probably guess from our name, our members are typically hunters and anglers. We interface with C R M C on a number of fronts. We're, we're very well aligned on the work C R M C does to promote and enhance shoreline access. And we also participate actively in permit applications that affect the areas and the species that our members care about. I did submit written testimony already and, and it's more extensive than I can cover in the couple of minutes that I have here, but I just want to highlight a couple of things. First, I, you know, I, I want to highlight the work that C R M C's staff done, has, has done particularly on shoreline access. As you probably know, the state of Rhode Island recently passed a law that essentially overhauled the shoreline access regime or lateral access. This is something that C R M C staff was integral in through their participation in a legislative study commission that crafted the law. And then after it was passed, in educating the public on what their rights are and where they can go. Another highlight that is very important that happened in the evaluation period is the publication of an interactive right-of-way viewer. This is a tool that the access-seeking public can now use to figure out where they can go. They don't have to sift through arcane paperwork or, you know, drive up and down the beach looking for a sign. They can go right on to C R M C's website and figure out where access is before they even leave their house. There are a couple of things that we are very concerned with and primarily they relate to the council and some of its procedures. We've already heard that there are issues with the membership on the council and its, its ability to maintain a full ten-member panel. I would highlight for you, and I've done this in my written testimony, that over the last five years, we have never had ten members. At various times, we've had eight. Currently, we have seven, which is one member, you know, above the statutory quorum requirement to conduct business. That's a major issue and it's caused the council to not be able to schedule a full slate of meetings. Over the last five years, they've, they've canceled about twenty percent of their meetings. And in the worst year, two thousand and twenty-two, they canceled about thirty percent of their meetings. That is a major chunk of work that was not done because the council couldn't show up. There are also, there's an issue that I want to highlight related to the hearing officer. And I'll point out, as you probably know, that just in the last year, the governor appointed and the Senate confirmed an actual statutory administrative hearing officer for the council. The statute's been on the books for decades. This is the first time that we've actually had one. So this is a change. The thing that I'm concerned about here is that one of the contested applications that has been referred to the hearing officer has been heavily influenced by the participation of C R M C's legal counsel, who sits in the hearing and actively engages with people who are parties to the contested matter. This is disappointing because as background for this, I went back and I read some of our prior performance, your performance reviews that NOAA had issued. And I realized in two thousand and ten that there was an explicit directive that they needed to separate the functions of the legal counsel from the administrative hearing officer. To reinforce this, I would also look to the statute that, that empowers this hearing officer, which has very strict requirements that keep the hearing officer impartial. That person is required to not be a partner in a law firm that practices elsewhere. They're, they're required to be dedicated to their duties as the hearing officer. And C R M C's legal counsel has no such requirements. They can, for example, lobby for other entities that might have contract or conflicts of interest before the government. They can even act as solicitors to coastal towns that are sometimes party to contested matters. And so I'll, I'll wrap these up by saying that it was very disappointing for me to see as I was doing background work that C R M C has regressed on some of the things that they have been required to address in the past. And we hope that NOAA will, will take steps to either recommend or to require action to resolve these things once and for all. With that, I thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shane Rooney.
Good evening. My name is Shane Rooney with the East Farm Commercial Fisheries Center. This nonprofit organization represents nine different fishing associations across the state, including various ports and fisheries. The center, along with many of its members, have been engaged with C R M C through the offshore wind permitting and federal consistency processes for many years. It is critical to have input from the local fishing community within the decision-making process as they are the primary stakeholders and they will experience these impacts the most. In the past, the Fisheries Advisory Board members filled this role. However, after years of significant commitment from FAB members to provide their knowledge, expertise, and sometimes proprietary information to the agency and council members to help better inform their decisions, the FAB member collectively resigned from their roles due to their frustration with the decision-making structure in the process. C R M C now lacks a formal method of gathering this critical fisheries input. The issue many of the industry members have with the C R M C's structure lies with the final agency decisions being made, being ultimately made by the council and not the expert staff of the agency. The flawed structure of the agency council results in drawn-out decisions, a lack of trust and transparency, and even decisions that go against expert recommendations made by the C R M C staff and the supporting advisory boards. The staff at C R M C has been extremely supportive and helpful throughout this process to the industry. They continue to build trust with the fishing industry and we believe they are well-positioned to make these final agency decisions based on their expertise. Fishermen have expressed willingness and interest to reengage with these processes only, however, only until the council is removed or restructured. We believe that the current agency structure and process involving decisions being made by the council does not provide benefit to these stakeholders. East Farm Commercial Fisheries Center encourages a restructuring of the agency in where the agency's professional staff is given the authority to make these final decisions. And, and thank you for the opportunity to provide comments.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keith Hoffman.
Thank you very much. My name is Keith Hoffman. I'm the chief of policy for the Rhode Island Office of the Attorney General. And I'm here this evening to provide our office's experience in appearing before the Coastal Resources Management Council and defending administrative actions, actions by agencies in this state. I think you've heard a lot of testimony this evening about not so much decisions or that we simply disagree with as processes that are fundamentally unfair that the council has upheld. As you know, the C R M C is comprised of a staff of experts who are very, very good at their jobs and very professional that are overseen by a politically motivated council of nine members plus an ex officio member. And this structure is just not workable. It's resulted in a conflict at times between the expert staff recommendations and ultimate decisions of the council. Mistakes in administrative procedures, many of which you've heard about this evening in an agency that is not enforcing its own regulations. Those regulations are strong. The C R M C staff are strong, but there are just many, many cases where the structure of the council has resulted in inequity. One case involved the marina expansion for mega yachts in a sensitive tidal area of Buck Island. C R M C's reliance on private counsel, we've heard about the issues with counsel. And their own under-resourced contested case processes resulted in the hired council entering into a backroom mediation without the town or other intervenors present, even when the C R M C's decision to deny had been upheld by a trial court. Ultimately, they reached an unlawful mediated settlement that reversed the already affirmed C R M C denial without addressing any of the ninety-four or so reasons why it was denied. After the Attorney General intervened and appealed mediated resolution, the Supreme Court of Rhode Island had to step in and overturn this, the council's unlawful mediation and restore the original denial. Fundamentally, we have a council protocol of appointees. They are volunteers. They can be wonderful people, but they just don't have the technical expertise. And frankly, they're not really being paid to provide the technical expertise that's really needed to, to run a modern agency. We've had a number of other issues that the Attorney General's office will try to detail in written comments. But one additional example that some folks have already talked about this evening is what's happened recently at the Quinesse Country Club. The Quinesse Country Club had an application for a similar for, for a wall, a seawall to be put up that was effectively denied in two thousand and twelve. So they just went ahead and built a larger wall without seeking permission of the council. The the Army Corps of Engineers issued a notice of violation. The, obviously, the C R M C had not approved this gigantic seawall. I urge you to, to take a look at pictures online if you haven't seen it. But despite this, the council issued a notice proposed rulemaking to entertain the golf course's petition for a water type change that might allow the seawall to remain and effectively stalled the enforcement efforts. This is just par for the course. Variances are frequently granted to applicants. The variances are bootstrapped to change the category of waters to justify continued development in the area, which has led to cascading development and permanent degradation, degradation of certain coastal areas. The C R M C just appears to be outmatched by the corporations that it oversee, that it's in part charged with overseeing through regulatory purview. Again, unsurprising when the makeup of the council is taken into effect. I believe we're the only state with a council that is made up in this way. Wisconsin's is somewhat similar, but I believe that theirs is, is an advisory board. This is a unique Rhode Island, frankly, historical vestige and it should be changed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rich Hiddinger.
Thank you very much. My name is Rich Hiddinger. I am the first vice president of Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers. I was a member of the C R M C Fisheries Advisory Board for many years. And I was involved with the review of Vineyard Wind, South Fork Wind and Revolution Wind applications with particular emphasis on recreational fishing impacts. I've also helped write the Fisheries chapter fourteen years ago in the C R M C Ocean Sam. I served on Legislative Commission three years ago to evaluate possible restructuring of C R M C. RISA members rely on the Rhode Island Coastal Resources for their businesses, their livelihood and their recreational enjoyment. We believe that there are many capable staff at C R M C and that many of their programs there are well-run but under-resourced for the amount of coastal environment that they are responsible to protect. RISA finds fault with a political board having overriding power over the technical staff of scientists and engineers on technical issues. And we support changes to eliminate this politically-appointed board. We believe that C R M C's approval of South Fork and Revolution Wind projects on Coxledge, an area declared habitat of particular concern according to the Ocean Sam provides a glaring example of C R M C's abdication of its responsibilities under its own Ocean Sam. These project approvals were driven by political counsel over significant technical concerns from C R M C staff. RISA would also like to see structural changes to eliminate the internal conflicts such as aquaculture where C R M C is tasked with both promotion where CRM C has passed with both promotion of aquaculture and permitting new aquaculture leases. In the current organization, these tasks are actually being handled by one person. A setup that's doomed to fail. RISA has worked on many public access points that have been closed off in one way or another by adjacent property owners. And we've worked with CRM C on these issues, but CRM C clearly does not have the staff necessary to ensure that all the access points around the state remain open and accessible to the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is um Henry. Can't read the last name.
Tupac.
Tupac, oh, okay.
Plus, there's another Henry in the room?
From Block Island?
Good evening, and thank you very much for holding these hearings, which are really to us important. We didn't realize that NOAA um had um such uh jurisdiction uh under the law uh to help regulate CRM C, so um we're happy to be able to uh. I represent the Committee for the Great Salt Pond, which is Block Island's premier environmental protection organization. We have over three hundred members. And for the last uh thirty-five years, we've been striving to protect the Great Salt Pond, which is one of Block Island's most important and fragile natural resources. The committee, um I'm sorry, um we've worked closely with CRM C for the last uh thirty-five years with a special bent of protecting the environmental quality uh of the pond, and we uh have very high regard for the staff, which has worked hard to help implement uh the coastal management plan. And uh it is um the our only issue with CRM C is the very structure of the council with its ten politically-appointed members, which have uh no requirement for any expertise in coastal uh management um experience. Clearly, the council needs uh reform. And the Committee for the Great Salt Pond has been at the forefront of CRM C reform with all the other organizations that you've heard from, and with good reason. It was the committee which led the fight to get CRM C to deny the massive Champlin's Marina Expansion Proposal, which would significantly impact the environmental quality and restrict the other uses of the Great Salt Pond. Block Island, and the defense of the Great Salt Pond took over nineteen years and cost us over six hundred thousand dollars that we raised through donations to pay for expert witnesses and and legal assistance through dozens and dozens of hearings over that period. And um the um result of all of this was uh we won the project's unanimous denial by the council in two thousand and fourteen. And then in two thousand and twenty, as the Attorney General as representative said, uh the project inexplicably came back to life with an ascent that was granted by the council after secret deliberations and closed-door meetings without any notice to the town or the other um project uh opposition. Mercifully, this illegal action was finally overturned by the Rhode Island Supreme Court decision in two thousand and twenty-two. So the good news is there is a mechanism to reform the council. There's two bills waiting uh in the State House to do exactly that. Uh they have not uh been passed, uh but I think uh that uh with NOAA's urging the state to uh enact the reform, we will get an agency uh like DEM uh which uh will fulfill the CRM C's original mission. And we look forward uh to with to that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So Peter Convers?
I I uh I signed the sign and key. I didn't know it was this.
That's fine.
Planning to write a letter.
All right. Thank you. Um Scott Travers?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Travers. I'm the executive director of the Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers Association. I'm also a graduate of the Massachusetts Maritime Academy and a retired harbor master for one of the towns in Rhode Island, and also a recreational angler. The Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers Association is the voice of Southern New England fishermen. It's an organization of approximately seventeen hundred members and over thirty affiliated organizations. We support marine conservation and sound management of fisheries resources, as well as providing a unified voice to preserve and protect the rights, traditions, and the future of recreational fishing in Rhode Island. CRM C was created in nineteen seventy-one, and the wording used at that time, as quoted from the CRM C website, legislative findings recognize the paramount importance that the coastal resources provide to the social and economic welfare of the state, and charged CRM C with the explicit policy to protect, preserve, develop, and where possible, restore the coastal resources of the state for this and succeeding generations. And it concluded with, "The preservation and restoration of ecological systems shall be the primary guiding principle upon which environmental alteration of the coastal resources shall be measured, judged, or regulated." Now, if we fast forward to twenty-ten, CRM C adopted the Ocean SAM, uh the federally recognized coastal management and regulatory tool to carry out that public trust obligation. Part of that process was the establishment of the Fisheries Advisory Board. In two thousand and twenty-three, the board disbanded after frustrations that their voices, which represented the opinions, concerns, and positions of users of the coastal waters of Rhode Island, were not being heard. Many Rhode Islanders rely on our coastal resources for their businesses, their livelihood, their recreation, and as well as to provide food for their families. As was previously previously noted, there are many qualified, knowledgeable, and intelligent staff members within CRM C. However, having a politically-appointed board with the power to override informed opinions and decisions based on data and facts by highly-trained and educated scientists, engineers, and other experts in the field is clearly a mistake. Relating to the aquaculture permitting process, there's no fair way to have one organization both be an advocate for a certain activity as well as overseeing the permitting process for that same activity. This is a mistake and clearly a conflict of interest. The Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers Association supports the restructuring of CRM C to address these issues of concern, not only for our members, but for all Rhode Islanders. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Can someone check to see if there's any other uh silence for speaking? No? Okay. Um so um that's everyone who signed up to speak. Um so um if there's anybody who did not sign up that wants to speak, who has not yet spoken, uh now's your opportunity. Um otherwise, we will end the the meeting. Seeing nobody volunteering to speak, uh on behalf of the evaluation team, I want to thank you for your um comments today. Uh and know that um formal written comments uh are um will be received through next Friday. And uh the the meeting information, as well as the handout, has the um email address to send that to.
Can you explain what happens from this point forward?
Yes, I can do that. Uh so the um so we have um two more days of visits um and meeting with various partners um where we'll gather additional information. Um we receive the written comments, and then the NOAA evaluation team will develop a uh findings document that includes um accomplishments uh as well as recommendations where areas where the uh the evaluation team sees opportunities um or areas for um improvement as well as necessary actions, and those are things that are related to uh the implementation of the program under the Coastal Zone Management Act, the law, and the implementing regulations. Um and those are uh items that would have a defined timeline to address. The evaluation will come out as a draft finding and will be given to the program for an opportunity for review and comment. Um and then um NOAA will consider those comments uh as in finalizing that document. And then that document will be um sent to the to the organization as well as uh made publicly available um at the NOAA website, um as well as email addresses that have been shared, and anybody who submits a written comment and other interested parties. Um the timeline for that um is to be, we anticipate having that report out in January. Is there anything else that we want to add about the? Okay. Yep. So that is the the process from from here. Um also know that um NOAA uh requires reporting on those recommendations and necessary actions, so we do follow up on those. Particularly the um necessary actions by those due dates, but also expect annual reporting um on uh those recommendations um throughout the till the next evaluation. Right? So again, yes.
Yeah, just ask one question. Um this is a process that's been going on for years. It's every five years, and and CRM C's been around since nineteen seventy-seven. This is not a new problem, council. And what I'm concerned about is that we're just going to kick a can down the road again, and nothing's going to happen. Is there any assurance that you can give this group here that that you're going to look at this very carefully and that that the recommendations are probably the same in the past, that you cannot have a council that has other interests in the coastal program?
Um I can assure you that we'll be working very hard and diligently and considering the input and all the the various information that we're getting. I cannot promise uh or share um any predetermined outcomes. Um but know that um the Coastal Zone Management Act has this process developed, and it's written into the law um by the US Congress to um review and um improve performance um and and ensure adherence to the law. So that's the that's the foundation of of what the evaluation is.
So is your leverage funding? Full funding?
That 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 is, there there is, there is a process um built into the CZMA for that.
I worry about political influence of the state and the state house affecting this whole project. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all.